Mr. Bobrowski, good morning.
Good morning again, Your Honor. Mark Bobrowski for the Board of Appeals of Groton and the Board of Selectment of Groton as custodians of town property. This case, the Groton case, turns on the question of whether or not the Housing Appeals Committee can order the town to grant an easement where otherwise a town meeting vote would be required pursuant to Chapter forty, Sections three and fifteen A.
Let me get to that. I mean, I've read those provisions. Are you certain?
The Harris-
Does a town meeting have to, by state law, an easement that the town should provide to anyone?
Yes, Your Honor. The Harris versus Whalen case holds on point. Not to mention, Your Honor-
It's not an easement, is it?
Wasn't it a sale?
It was a sale, I believe.
Yeah.
But there are procurement issues here as well that are unaddressed by the Housing Appeals Committee under Chapter thirty B. For example, a process of disposition of land has to be undertaken. So it's our position that a town meeting-
But if it's not a sale, why is that so?
An alienation of an easement interest is, for practical purposes, the same as alienation of the fee.
What's the procurement? I don't understand.
There is, there is an argument that we did not raise in the brief that the HAC also avoids the procurement act, Chapter thirty B. In a disposition of land by a municipality, there's a complicated bidding process and notice process that has to be undertaken.
To cut grass?
This is not about cutting the grass. It's about granting an interest of the town, the property interest of the town. We concede that it is a small area of land that would be subject to this easement. But as I noted in my reply brief, a small area of land is still an easement.
The electric company would not have granted to cut the trees.
No, and I-
If it's in a town meeting-
Yes. And the Housing Appeals Committee acknowledges that in its decision. It acknowledges that an easement otherwise would be required by the vote of town meeting. If the, if the Housing Appeals Committee is correct, then the only way for the easement formalities to be avoided would be to construe the town's grant of the easement as a requirement or regulation as defined in the statute. And the statute provides that the ZBA can waive local requirements and regulations where the imposition would render the project uneconomic.
Is there anything in, and this might be better addressed to the police, but is there anything in the statute or regulations that grant the Housing Appeals Committee the authority to do this? Anything explicit?
No. They have the power to waive local requirements and regulations. And in my brief, I go through a very lengthy excerpt of Hanover, which talks about these requirements and regulations, all of them focused on zoning practices adopted by municipalities to impede or block the construction of affordable housing.
As a matter of just sort of background, if we agree with you and your brother that this, I assume this is what he's going to argue, that this can't be done, is this project finished?
Yes.
It is?
Yes. The Housing Appeals Committee, after receiving prefiled testimony by experts for both the developer and the board, ruled that the proposed driveway had inadequate site distance. The inadequate site distance was of the nature of forty-nine feet. This has to do with stopping site distance for motor vehicles traveling on Lowell Road eastbound.
The trees or whatever they are, et cetera, all got to be cut down?
Without the cutting of the trees on the property of the town of Groton, not in the right-of-way, on the town of Groton, there's only three hundred feet of site distance. We don't think that the jurisdiction of the Housing Appeals Committee extends that far, nor could they have ordered the town to allow the developer to come onto the town property to cut the trees because, in effect, they would be-
That's not just a town meeting.
Well, they would be, in effect, sanctioning trespass. And I don't think that trespass constitutes, the law of trespass is not a requirement or regulation imposed locally. It's a cardinal principle of property law. I don't think that the-
Now, the gas and electric, I take, takes the position they will not cut the trees.
Groton Electric Light Department, represented by my brother.
Yeah.
They, they are of, as I'm sure my brother Nicholas Scoboe will explain to you, they will take the position that those trees provide a function. They provide screening from travelers on Route forty, which is a state highway, and serve other purposes that I'll leave to him.
What, and just, I know you got this in your brief, but could you, could you summarize the difference between this case and the Maynard case?
And the Maynard case? The Maynard case, I acquired the brief for the Maynard case. In the Maynard case, the, it's almost a throwaway paragraph by the court in that decision. And effectively, what the court ruled is that it could dispense with the town meeting vote required by general law, Chapter eighty-three, Sections one, three, eight, and twenty-three. In those statutes, which have to do with extensions of sewer lines, there are various requirements of a municipality to fund the municipal portion of it and other issues of that nature. It was a very weak argument in the brief of the municipality, almost of a secondary, it certainly was of a secondary nature. And the court, in a very quick handling of that, said that it could dispense with the town meeting vote. The town meeting vote that necessary under Chapter eighty-three and its assorted sections had nothing to do with the alienation of a municipal property interest. We think that the matter is better controlled by Chelmsford versus DiBiase, which this court decided. In the Chelmsford case, the-
This court decided Maynard as well?
I understand. But they decided the Chelmsford case at a later date than the Maynard case, if I'm correct. In the Chelmsford case, the municipality took property which was proposed as the location for a Chapter forty B site. Unlike the Burlington case, in which the taking was not for a public purpose, in Chelmsford they'd studied the property for a considerable period of time, and the court found that it was a good faith effort at eminent domain. There was an effort to undo the vote of town meeting at the Housing Appeals Committee, and the court rejected that argument, as my brief indicates, because this was not a requirement or regulation. The town meeting vote to undo, to take the property by eminent domain could not be undone as a local requirement or regulation. It went-
And that wasn't even an issue here, since the developer-
Correct. I think that's handled by the, holding by the court in the North Andover case, in which it said that the legislation does not go that far. The Housing Appeals Committee may think that that's a useful authority to have. Undoubtedly, it would be. But the legislature has not conferred that power, and if the legislature sees fit to change the statute, it has the power to do so.
In Maynard, I think you just cited Sections one, three, I forget, it was about five of them.
Yes, one, three, eight, and twenty-three.
And all of them are about funding?
I think some of them just have to do with municipal sewer, general issues. I have the statutes.
I mean, that's, okay, but it-
But your point was that they didn't have to do with the alienation of land?
No, they do not go to the alienation of municipal property, which Chelmsford clearly calls out as a special case. When it goes to the ownership interest, changing the ownership interest of the property, undoing eminent domain or conducting eminent domain, we're in a different ballpark than we would be under the Chapter eighty-three provisions, which have nothing to do with changing ownership of property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bobrowski. Mr. Scoboe?
Good morning. May it please the court, Nicholas Scoboe, on behalf of the Groton Electric Light Department. The Groton Electric Light Department is a department of the town. It has an independently elected board and supplies all the electricity to the town of Groton. All of that electricity comes through an open-air substation, which is adjacent to a right-of-way owned and operated by National Grid, which is a private utility that has nothing to do with the Groton Electric Light Department. An open-air substation, in this instance, is a step-down from sixty-nine thousand volts to thirteen thousand eight hundred volts. It has a chain-link fence, and it is set off of Lowell Road by quite some distance.
You said the department doesn't own that?
We own, no. The town owns the land. The department operates the substation on the land. What I said was the town has nothing to do with the transmission lines, which abut that property. That's owned and operated by the National Grid. There is an open-air substation. It was designed twenty-five years ago, and it was set off from the road and has a curved driveway. And there are two easements that are discussed here in this case, not just one. The first one is in the front with the trees, and that's designed as screening so that people don't know that there is a substation there. And the second one is for access and egress as an emergency vehicles coming off of the right-of-way owned and operated by National Grid across the parking area for trucks and so on, that the Groton Electric Light Department operates, and then into the property of Washington Green. Those are the two easements at stake.
The National Grid does have an easement over the property?
No, it does not. It does not. There's a dirt road on the National Grid right-of-way. What the HAC said is that we can order, says the HAC, an easement from the National Grid property across the Groton Electric Light Department substation area for access and egress of emergency vehicles to the-
When Mr. Bobrowski said the project would be finished, if this isn't upheld, this easement business, the developer could go to the town, couldn't he, and ask the town meeting to grant him the easement?
He could, if it so, if it so chose. And in that regard, I would refer you that I think the legislature takes that into account because of Chapter forty, Section fifteen A. The second paragraph says, when the town wishes to alienate a right in land for purposes of forty B, it does so with majority vote of town meeting, not two-thirds.
If the town has accepted it, has Groton accepted that provision?
I don't know that. But my point is whether the town has or hasn't, the legislature had provided that-
Can you let us know if Groton's accepted it? Well, no, you can write back to us.
Sure.
Yeah.
I can do that. In addition, this open-air substation, as I indicated, has a chain-link fence with some barbed wire on top, and it is separated. It has, as you might expect, two very large transformers, which significant amount of electricity that gets stepped down in that, in those transformers. The Groton Electric Light Department is not a local board defined by forty B. It has no authority to issue permits for Washington Green. It has no role in the process. It's merely an abut here. And in that regard, I don't think the HAC, I don't think the law provides, is the HAC can step into the shoes of the Groton Electric Light Department and permit, in any way, shape, or form, the developer to use the property.
If the HAC gets this power, it could be limitless.
Well, yeah.
I mean, and they could say to some private citizen, we need two acres of your land.
I tend to agree. In fact, on appeal, the judge had, hey, it's only a small interest in land.
I know. He called it de minimis.
Yeah, well.
Well, it is tiny.
But there's a difference between doing something that involves town property and a private property. I mean, if you treat it as local regulation. I mean, in other words, I don't, I think there's a big stretch between-
Yeah, there is.
-this and saying, as I think Justice Green was suggesting, you could take two acres from some private person's property.
Well, perhaps that's what he was suggesting. I don't know.
Well, I think he was sort of- The land is owned by the town, is it?
It is owned by the town, and-
So it's unquestionably town land, whatever, whatever your department's-
Right.
You're the operator of the-
You're an agent.
Transformers or whatever it is.
As, as the Chief Justice once said to me in an argument, the town is on one hand-
I hope not this Chief Justice.
This Chief Justice.
What did I say? It must have been-
The town is one hand, and the light department is another, but they're still connected.
It really doesn't matter whether the trees have a function or not. I know you argue they have a function, you know, aesthetics and, you know, a few other things.
Security.
Security and so forth. The basic proposition is, can you do it or not? And if you can't do it, you can't do it. Whether, you know, if the, if the town wants to be stubborn about it, you can't do it.
That is our view. Now, I would also like to turn the court's attention to the substantial argument, substantial evidence arguments we made, if I could.
Do we need to get to those if we agree with you on this easement thing?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. Because I said we didn't.
Nonetheless, assuming that you make a mistake and you don't do that.
Oh, no, no, I'm not discouraging you. I'm just analytically trying to put this case together.
We agree, the Groton Electric Light Department has the burden of, by substantial evidence, to prove that the dangers of the substation outweigh the need for affordable housing. We believe we met that burden. There was only one piece of evidence, one expert, who testified on the safety issues in the case, the safety issues being the harm that could be caused, and that was our expert. There was no other evidence. In fact, the HAC found that it was undeniable, indisputable, that, and indisputable, that exposure to high voltage burns or kills instantly. There's a very high risk of catastrophic injury. The children particularly at risk, and that is impossible to guard unauthorized entry.
But wasn't there evidence of a sound of a wall or-
I'm not so sure I'd call it evidence. I think that there was a proposition put forth by the hearing officer, the HAC, what if a sound wall was put up? That only, that only covers part of the property. It doesn't cover, it doesn't cover two sides of the property. There's no one living in the land next door.
Next door, but there people live on that street.
Across the street, and there is one or two houses across the street. That is correct.
No, it seems to me if you have a problem and you ought to address the safety problem-
Well, I don't think that's, I don't think that's our burden. I think that's the-
Well, no, there's people living in the area.
Of course it is. And for the substation and the design, et cetera, it was cited by the Energy Facility Siting Board with those very points in mind, including safety. That's correct. If, if, for example, if, 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 for example, that the, the affordable housing was next door, they would, this substation would be enclosed. It wouldn't be an open-air substation, absolutely. The fact is, it was cited there purposely.
You're certain that you can afford it? You've got more than forty people, you're enclosed. I mean, is it dangerous to-
No, no, that's not right. It is designed for the space in which it is located.
So you're, there's an actual, your defense says-
Yeah.
One of forty, and we designed it for four.
Whatever the standard was twenty-five years ago, when this was built, the answer is yes, it was designed for safety in mind. The problem is, when you put, when you put forty-four units next to it, that safety goes away. And it's the burden, under the law, of the developer to provide some kind of mitigation measures, not the Groton Electric Light Department to do so. If the Groton Electric Light Department had to do that, it would have to spend-
You have an obligation to maintain a safe facility.
Absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely. And it is safe, the way it-
And it's not that you want to have a facility there.
No, we can't dictate who's going to live on the street, but the zoning of abutting land was for maybe one or two houses. That's it. The override was on the zoning.
So it's a special permit? Any number of reasons why they're likely to more housing for their land property?
Potentially.
At that point, you'd have to reconsider the-
We would-
Whatever the precautions are.
We would have to clearly reconsider the design and so on. There's no doubt about it. But under the HAC set of circumstances, that's the developer's burden, not ours.
Thank you, Mr. Scoboe.
Thank you.
Ms. Reynolds?
Good morning, Your Honors. May it please the court, Assistant Attorney General Mary Ann Reynolds for the Housing Appeals Committee. Analytically, I would like to focus you on the fundamental issue in this case, which is reasonableness. Reasonableness is a statutory term. You'll find it in Section twenty-three. The standard for the committee's review of this application was whether the board's denial was reasonable and consistent with local needs.
I take it you're focusing us there because you have no direct authority that permits the HAC to grant an easement on somebody else's property?
Correct. There's no, there's no explicit-
Nothing in any statute says, well, in doing one of these things, you can grant easements, create rights of access, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
No, there is no explicit language that either expressly provides for or conversely expressly prohibits what the committee-
Could they pass a regulation implementing their quote statutory authority to permit this sort of thing to be done?
The, well, the, we would like you to consider this case as it was presented on the record.
Well, that's what we're going to do, but I'm just wondering if, you know, down the road, they wanted to, you know, shore it up a little bit, maybe define a little more particularly what kind of interests, maybe limit them to interests on municipal land as opposed to private property. They, could they do that?
Well, Your Honor, I can't speak to how they would interpret their authority in an area where they haven't yet expressed that, where they haven't set it out for common, a regulation we put out for common, and they would review those. But here, in this case, there is statutory language and case law that supports what the committee has done.
And you're relying on Maynard?
That's one of it, but that's not, that's not the only case that we would be relying on. The first- Right.
The view as a board has no power to do it.
Right. What the committee did here was it ordered the grant of a permit, and it focused on what the problem is. And I would strongly urge you to focus on the problem. I think there's, by starting off just talking about an argument over an easement, we lose the- If I may, if I, but we only get there based on this particular record because the easement was introduced as a solution by the board.
No, I understand. Ms. Reynolds, do you, do you recognize, I don't know, maybe concede is the wrong word, that when it comes, for whatever reasons, good or bad, when it comes to real property, right? Real property, I mean, in just about every area of law I can think of, we treat real property, which the granting of an easement is, concerns real property, somewhat differently than we do, for example, all kinds of other regulations. All kinds of other, I mean, what-
Yes.
From the, from the, so it's, it's not helpful for you, frankly, from my point of view, to say, you have to understand how we got to the easement question.
Well, but you just said the board proposed it?
The board proposed it. The board's-
The ZBA.
Right, as the mitigating solution to the problem presented, which was, the problem presented was that traffic motoring public along Lowell Road, when they got to the vicinity of where this proposed development's access road would be, if there was an obstacle in Lowell Road, then they would not have adequate site distance to stop and react to that obstacle.
I understand that, but what authority does the board have to grant easements over town property?
Board is, the board is the town, right?
Right. The board, the board is operating as a town, and the board, the committee-
Oh, no, no, it's-
It's an agency.
Right.
The-
Not even that, it's a board.
The board, the committee has the authority on to act as the town in a number of ways, as outlined in the statute. But what I, what I really need you to do is to just first pull back, and at least if you understand where the committee was coming from, as a threshold matter, we will make a lot of progress because the easement, again, is, the committee's interest is not in, first interest, is not in establishing the power to require an easement. The committee's first interest is in reviewing this application that was before it and determining whether the board's denial was reasonable and consistent with local needs. The only reason that the committee found why this project could be, not go forward, was because motoring public on Lowell Road were going to not have adequate stopping site distance to react to an obstacle in Lowell Road. I would note that presumably that same problem exists today with or without the development. Okay? And all the, the only practical, no, there is a practical solution to making Lowell Road safe today and with the housing development for motoring public, and that was, they just need to mow some grass. I really wanted this- Very slight regrading.
Grading more.
Any cutting of trees?
No trees. I don't know where these trees come from. No trees. There's vegetation. All that was talked about was maintaining a vegetation clearance. So this is like scrub bush. This is right up against the inside curve of Lowell Road. The trees are set further back. Those trees set further back are what the GELD refers to as the screen. I'm talking much closer to the road in that there's a little bit of grading that needs to be done.
There's an access, there's more access than-
Now, that's in the, that, yeah, that's at a different location. That's in the back.
That's another reason that it's required.
That's a so-called easement, yes. And there-
Is it not an easement?
The, the committee's decision doesn't say that an easement has to be granted. It says that an easement can be granted if the town will not voluntarily address the situation itself.
It can be granted if the town wants to do it.
The committee, the committee.
They'll go back to hack.
And what I'm saying is, in distinguishing, and getting back to the Chief Justice's question, yes, Maynard helps us because Maynard talks about the town meeting vote can be dispensed with as a local rule or requirement. But I'd also have you take a look at the-
Does it, did it say that broadly or?
That it's frivolous.
The town meeting requirements are frivolous, no explanation.
Agreed. It says what it says, and the, and the committee read Maynard and, and accepted it for what it says. But that is-
That's a pretty broad meeting of Maynard. Town meeting requirements of all sorts are somehow frivolous.
That may, that may be a broad reading. And the- I'd also draw your attention to, though, to other cases that I feel support our position. Those include Chelmsford. They include the North Andover case. And here's the reason why. In those cases, where you pushed back the committee's authority, you said two things that don't operate here. One is, you said, when we have to get involved with a balancing of public purposes, we are not going to do that. So to the extent that there's competing public purposes established by the legislature, the Housing Committee, and some other, like a conservation public policy, we are not going to decide that affordable housing outweighs conservation. You don't have that here. The only bound, sort of competing public purpose you have is public safety along Lowell Road. There, there's a statute that very clearly says that a town has the duty to maintain roadways in a safe condition. So all that we're asking is that the committee be viewed as applying that reasonable language and saying, here, we have, the town has an opportunity to keep Lowell Road safe, doesn't have to go onto anybody else's property, it controls the property at issue, it should keep that area- We won't- We will be happy to have a solution where it's other than an easement. The town should step up and do it itself. But what the town said in this case, it's in this record, it said, we're not going to do it. We are going to be stubborn, I think was the word, I would say, suggest hostile. And given that the town was not going to do it, that they made that extremely clear, the committee was forced to look at the easement option which they had presented, and the only obstacle-
When did, when did the town present the easement option?
It's their expert witness, I think it's on page seven sixty-three to seven sixty-four of the administrative record. And there, the, their witness said, you need to get an easement. And then what they, they came in and they quickly argued, but you-
That's a legal solution. You need to get an easement.
That's the, that's the evidence that they put in, that that is the mitigating solution to- That you need to get an easement. And yes, they came in quickly on a legal basis and said, but you can't get an easement because you need a town meeting vote. And the committee looked at Maynard and said, well, town meeting-
What the board is saying, we can ditch it.
No, because the town, as in the reply brief makes clear, they could just do that themselves, or they could give permission. We don't, the only reason that an easement is even suggested is because the town won't do it themselves, or they won't give, voluntarily give permission. There's nothing in this record that suggests that in order for this to be accomplished, the only way is for, from a, is for an easement, the town could have done it themselves. And we would- While you would apply- You would look at the case developed and decide if that's reasonable? I would suggest that hypothetically speaking, that's a much different case, and you might go other, the other way in that case, and you might go here because he-
He needs an easement for drainage.
But here, there's no change. There's absolutely no change in what this land is being used for. All, this land is just scrub vegetation, scrub vegetation, inside curve. It's just, it's basically by keeping the vegetation low, by mowing, mowing the grass, the emergency access.
Does the record tell us why the town opposes allowing the vegetation to be cut back?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't say that. It just basically is using this as a convenient way, what we call an effective veto, to kill this affordable housing project. It makes no rational sense that they wouldn't want it today, maintain that vegetation lower. But I don't know if they, apparently they feel that it's the state clears their, I'm not sure, that- Lowell Road is Route forty, so, right. So- But the town, the town has a duty to maintain, under the statute, and this is not, there's, the town has a duty, as GELD says in their reply brief, to, agrees with our interpretation of the statute, I think it's Chapter eighty-four.
The practical matter, how would you formalize this easement? Would the, if the gas and, if the town were- If the town refuses to sign a formal legal document granting the easement, what do you record in the Registry of Deeds?
The practical...
The opinion of HAC?
Presumably, the parties would work that out, that as the board's expert said that you'd get an easement and they, and the...
What if they don't work it out? What do you do then?
I guess they would have to come back to the Housing Appeals Committee and ask them to further look at the...
Issue an order directing the town board, officer, mayor, whatever it is, to sign the easement?
That, I guess that would be a bridge that we would cross when we come to a...
Let me tell you what the problem is, because, and that goes back to my, and I've heard all of your arguments, and I understand why you want to go in through the reasonable door, but this use of the land is not going to last forever, and the town wants to sell off the land, and somebody's going to go to the Registry of Deeds and not going to see that there's a formal recording of an easement, and let's assume that this takes place, you know, so you've got no adverse possession claims or anything like that, and the new owner says, "I don't want your stuffs coming along here. I'm actually a little conservation group, and you may think it's just old brush, old stuff over there, but brush, old stuff over there is very important to the environment, and we're not going to let you keep cutting. Developer's going to be in a very bad position. You've got to get a formal document that says that somebody can enter into that land." The same, I think, is true for the roadway. So you have to have a formal document that will be filed in the Registry of Deeds?
Okay, so you would have to have the formal document, assuming that the town did not maintain the land itself, or that it did not just act as a, perhaps what you might call a good neighbor, and allow the developer to do it himself?
If we said the, if we said the appeals committee has authority to do this, I'm sure the town would execute whatever...
Yes, but you can't, but you have to. My point is not that the town is going to violate a court order. My town is... You said, "Well, it may not be an easement, it may just be them cutting the bush," and I'm saying to you, "No, this, this is an interest in land, and in order to keep, you have to have it recorded so a future purchaser, the developer, may sell the property."
Right. This is an interest in public safety first, though. I'd just like to say that the fundamental, as you go forward with your analysis, it starts from the proposition that there is a safety issue that needs to be addressed, that needs to be mitigated, the same way that you might install a traffic light, and that over time that traffic light needs to be maintained, et cetera.
So is the responsibility, the responsibility of the state to make sure that the state highway doesn't have any, you know, vegetative obstructions to the curve?
I believe that it's the town that has an obligation, perhaps the state...
Okay, can the state enforce an obligation to keep the curve clear, to keep the view clear?
I'm not prepared to answer that if the court wanted to direct me to research that, but that was not, I don't have an answer prepared for that question. And if I may, since my time is running short, no state oversight. All of your other cases where you've pushed back the committee's authority, there has always been some state oversight of what the town is doing. Here, you don't have that, regardless of which easement that you're looking at. If you're looking at that easement in the back, the local fire department can designate that as a fire lane. That's not, designation of a fire lane is, doesn't have state oversight. I know that as a fact. This is, this particular access wasn't even deemed necessary to make the project to go. The committee said, "But it's a good idea, the developer has suggested it, we like the idea, we encourage the town to do it," okay?
So that...
And if they don't come back, then we can talk, but that, but it's not an actual...
It's not necessarily the project.
No, they agreed that the single access road into the development may be sufficient because there was not this types of slopes that sometimes are found with single access road, but having a secondary means of access for use by emergency vehicles only, and there's an existing...
The easement is on the land, it's on the land.
Well, then, then let's not have the easement, let's not have the easement, let's have the town cooperate and allow emergency vehicles to go over that, the same, and the state has given local fire departments, which, by the way, there's a list, and I think it's page 394 of the different towns...
If the town sells the land for some other entire use, parking lot in the road wouldn't exist, except for the easement.
In any case, what you're suggesting, Ms. Lennels, is that unlike maybe the first one, the second to the access road is not necessary to the project, so to go back to Justice Laney's question, if we determined that the board did not have the authority to do this, the committee didn't have the authority to do this, that would not kill the project?
That, that second one, right, but the...
Do you agree with Mr. Bobrowski that if we conclude that the Housing Appeals Committee does not have the authority to, in essence, order the town to cut the, you know, so there's sightlines, that that puts an end to the project?
Yes, because there is a regulation that says, in the case of denial, that the board shall have the burden of proving that there is a valid safety concern that outweighs the regional need for housing, and the board did find that this particular, that the motoring public on Lowell Road did need a certain amount of stopping sight distance, and that it decided that there was a practical solution, real world, feasible solution, wasn't going to cost the town any money, was no fancy anything involved, no change of the use, and so therefore, this valid concern did not outweigh the need for the housing. But if there is no solution to this stop sighting distance issue, then yes, the board would have met its burden.
Thank you, Ms. Lennels.
Thank you.
Is there one more argument? We're rising for your argument.
Thank you, thank you.
According to my sheet, you just used up 15 minutes, and that's all that's allocated.
Your Honor, previously, we had arranged for the division of...
How much time do you have?
Five minutes. I would like to revisit a couple of the factual matters that have been brought before the court to straighten a few things out. Going backwards in time, the first is that Lowell Road is a state numbered road, it is owned by the town of Groton, it is not a state highway. Also, the light department talked about there being no evidence whatsoever about safety matters, and I would just like to point out very few brief things. One is that the Housing Appeals Committee had the benefit of a plan that showed the substation, showed the houses, showed the sound wall, which is designed to accomplish three different things.
Mr. Wiseman, let me interrupt you, and without rehashing all of the arguments.
I have no arguments.
No, the town may wish to alienate this land at some point. It may want to sell it to some third party. Whatever rights the Housing Appeals Committee purported to give to the developer with respect to whether they were absolutely necessary, the cutting for sightlines, or the road because it would be preferable to have a second access and eagles, those will not attach to the land unless there's some recording. You have to, in other words, whatever the town's obligation is, and the town may well not be meeting its obligation, the town may be putting the people of Groton at great danger by the fact that it doesn't cut the sightlines, the town may be liable because somebody gets injured, not because of this project, but because the sightlines are not sufficiently well cleared, but if the town wants to get rid of this property, we have to have something that's recorded, that places an interest on the property. What is the authority of the Housing Appeals Committee to do that? And don't look at Maynard, because I'm going to accept Mr. Bobrowski's representation, which I hope is correct, that he went and looked at what the claims were, and they were not interests in land. This is an interest in land.
I was going to go to Maynard, but for the very reasons that Mr. Bobrowski did, and to presume that his analysis is correct as well, and that the reason that this court in that case said that it could dispense with the meeting, requirement of a town meeting is because a town meeting vote was not required, because nothing arose to the level that a town meeting vote was needed, and I believe the same is true in this case as well.
So if we look to see whether a town meeting vote is required, from your point of view, that ends the subject. If it's not required, that's the end of the...
I believe you can go down either road. You can go down a road that does require a town meeting approval, and you can go down one that does not require a town meeting approval. If we accept Mr. Bobrowski's analysis of Maynard, and for argument here, I'll presume that it is correct, this is also true in this case, because under the conveyancing statutes, your case law behind it states that the municipal conveyancing statutes apply if you're going from one specific municipal purpose to another, and you have case law that says if you're going from one use to another, inconsistent use, and we will maintain that the two easements that have been ordered by the HAC are 100% compatible with and consistent with the light department's use of this property for municipal light purposes. As a matter of fact, as Mary Ann Martin has pointed out, there are no trees in this sightline area. The light department has already cleared, leveled, and mowed this area, and I believe they do so for two purposes. One that has been discussed on the record is for sightline to their own driveway, because they are also on the same, on the inside of that same curve. The other is that there is a utility pole in the middle of this, and you can see the utility pole and the plans that are part of the record. This utility pole is used purely for electrical department purposes to transfer the power from the substation into the grid that goes along the streetway. So it's the, it's the point where power goes from high tension through the substation and is put out to where households can use it. You can't have, you can't have any vegetation around those power lines. They need to be kept clear for safety purpose, for all sorts of purposes. So this area is already pretty much in the same condition that it needs to be to meet the Housing Appeals Committee's requirements. Now, when they refer to slight regrading, there is significant regrading that needs to be done on our property in this area. We have a mound, we have shrubbery, we have all sorts of stuff that needs to come out on our property. It will need to be blended in with the light department's area. The regrading is incredibly light in this area. It may be none at all.
Is there any other way your project could be designed where the driveway, or whatever it is that's causing this problem, didn't create the sightline issue?
Unlikely. As Mr. Bobrowski points out, the record shows the HAC found that we needed another 49 feet of sightline, and if we move the road to its extreme opposite end, we've only got about 35 or 40 feet to work with. Now, I do need to point out that there are other ways to get speed down. In fact, the way that the, the speed, the standards were used, they go in increments of five miles an hour. So when you look at what is the average speed of the 85th percentile car going along this roadway, you go to the nearest five miles per hour. If cars were going a couple miles an hour slower in this area, it would have dropped the standard from 45 miles an hour to 40 miles per hour, and then we would have met the sightline distance. There may be ways to get traffic to go a little bit slower. We would ask you to keep that in mind.
So you could petition the state highway department?
I can petition the town.
It's on a state highway, though, isn't it?
It's a state numbered road that is owned by the town.
So the town can regulate the speed?
Correct. Correct. For example, they already have, in this exact sightline easement area, they have a "go slow children" sign.
So why isn't that a regulation within the meaning of Chapter 40B that could be affected by the comprehensive permit? You, the town of Groton, must lower the speed limit in this area to 40 miles per hour.
I don't believe anyone has looked at that yet, Your Honor. However, we...
An easement, we're here on an easement, we can't go looking at all kinds of other things.
We would ask you to uphold the easements, and I believe that the HAC has the authority to grant the easements with or without town meeting approval, and I'm saying that there's a road this way and there's a road that way. Under one theory, under one road to approval, town meeting approval is not necessary because since the, these easements do not change the use of the land and are not inconsistent... If I could give you two examples why I disagree with you, Your Honor. One would be that both of these easements lie within the town of Groton zoning setback areas. So this 10-foot-wide easement that's in the front is within its 50-foot-wide front setback area. You can't put any buildings or structures in this area anyway, and they already have a bunch of white pines there that provide the screening from the street.
Have you briefed why the town meeting doesn't have to do this?
Yes.
As a matter of law?
Yes.
Apart from these theories we're hearing now?
We have briefed that the municipal, under the municipal conveyancing statutes, the nature of these easements is such that they are not inconsistent with the town's existing use of this property, and therefore, the town meeting vote is not required.
And the facts are all in place to show that they're not inconsistent?
I believe that is correct, Your Honor.
Can an easement be granted as long as the town is using the property for the easement for, you know, and knows that the GELD has it?
Are you talking about the emergency access easement, perhaps, which is further back on the property?
Either one, either one. I mean, Justice Cortez's concern is about, you know, the future use or resale or whatever. Can the easement be limited to its current, its current use?
It could, the easement can be limited to providing sightline, which is a use that is necessary along this property anyway. Anywhere you put a driveway along the light department's property...
I mean, for example, providing a sightline for as long as the electric light department has a substation on the property, or something like that. Could you do that?
You could do that, but I don't think that would be necessary or assisting either the housing or the town. Once the housing is in, you want to be sure that they have adequate sight distance. I would note that in the statute itself, under the definition of local boards, and this is going back to the power of the HAC, there is in the definition, it says not only planning boards and boards of health and building inspectors, but it also says city councils and boards of selectmen. Those last two, I think, are instructive. You're talking about the chief executive officers of a town and the legislative body of a city. They don't mention...
They don't have the authority to convey this land?
In this case, the selectmen have the authority to convey the easements because the easements are not inconsistent with the use.
Have they, have they agreed to do so?
No.
No.
And that's, that's why you say you come up with a main. Counsel, your time is way over, and I think we'll have to take...
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Please, thank you.